Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall, here. Chair Pro Tem Wu.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell. Is absent, and Chair Berlin.
Here. And we have one item on our study session tonight, South El Camino Real Focus Area Standards. It's our second standard, uh, excuse me, our second, uh, second meeting on this. And, uh, Chris Wright will, uh, take us through it, Chris. So why don't you get, get us started?
Thank you. Yeah, we have a presentation PowerPoint.
Great.
Being pulled up. Yeah. So good evening, Chair Commissioners. Uh, this is a study session on the South El Camino Real Focus Area. It is, next slide please. It's a continuation of a study session we had on February 3rd. And there were three main areas where the Commission had had a desire to continue discussion. Uh, the first was a possible lowering of the minimum commercial floor area ratio from point three five to possibly point two five or point two. The second item was adjusting the height ceiling of the properties in the mixed use three point two zone without a use permit, possibly less emphasis on coastal views in terms of reviewing projects. And then lastly, exploring reducing parking standards, both in number and design. All of these sort of changes, of course, would require City Council initiation. Uh, but I think for the purpose of the study session was to explore whether the, the zone was working and then provide minutes and, and recorded video that the Council could consider whether to initiate such changes in the future. And with that, I'm going to pass this over to Gabriel. He has some additional content that he wanted to review before we get into discussion with the Commission.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Gabriel Perez, City Planner. Tara, if you can move to the next slide, please. One of the topics I know we wanted to cover, uh, is our development standards that we encounter working with developers that, uh, you know, may, may prove to be an obstacle or maybe create ambiguities and therefore is an obstacle for developer, um, to develop a project that conforms to the vision, you know, of our general plan. Um, so one of those is, is regarding residential yield in the mixed use zones. So we have our, our mixed use zone standards and uh, you know, this is an excerpt that's actually taken from the mixed use, uh, standards. Uh, so in terms of the maximum number of residential units for a mixed use project, that's based on two methods, uh, to be able to determine this. Uh, so you see here, the way it's worded, it's states that the maximum of one dwelling unit per 1,200 square feet of net lot area or one dwelling unit per 1,800 square feet of gross area, whichever is less. Right? So there's not one way to do this. There's two methods to do this. But at the end, at the, at the end, it says whichever is less, right? So, you know, for, for us as planners, it appears that the lower residential yield is the one that's desired, at least the, the, the strict reading of this section of the code. And, uh, and so in terms of what does net lot area mean and, and gross area, we're going to talk about that right now. Uh, but one of the things that we realize is once we apply the standard, uh, really it's one of, you know, one of these methods that always comes out to be the, the lower, uh, number of residential units, and that's usually, um, using, uh, gross area. So next slide, please. So there isn't a definition in our code for net lot area, area or, uh, gross lot area, but there is a definition for gross acres and acres. And so this is the way it's defined. So for gross acres, it means total number of acres within the subject area, uh, which includes, uh, local street right of way, either existing or to be dedicated, but excluding arterial street right of way, either existing or to be dedicated. And then net acres means the total number of acres created within the subject area. Once local street right of way, either existing or to be dedicated have been subtracted from the gross acres. So this ends up being the definition that we use to determine, well, what does net lot area, gross, um, lot area really mean? Um, next slide, please. So in terms of applying, you know, that standard in, in the code, uh, we wanted to give you some examples of what that could look like, uh, on South El Camino Real. So this is an address, um, you know, one, two, one, two, uh, South El Camino Real. And, you know, this is the possible site that could be redeveloped in, in the future. And so if we were to use that, that, uh, method of determining residential yield, you know, what would be the result? Uh, so next slide, please. So this site, one, two, one, two, South El Camino Real, it's an example. Uh, the, the, the net lot area is 19,602 square feet, not the gross. Uh, but the acreage is point five acres. Um, gross, and then the net is point four five. And, uh, and so when you, when you look at gross and net, the, this is the, the, the density that you would get under gross is 12 units per gross acres and 16 units per net acre. But what about the residential count that I was referring to? So the maximum number of residential units that you could get using gross lot area. Uh, so what you would do here is that, uh, you would take the, um, total gross lot area, which is the 21,780 square feet, divided by 4,500 square feet. You arrive at five units, right? That five units is less than the next method of calculating residential yield. And so, uh, the next one is the maximum residential units using net lot area. So, uh, using the, the, the net, uh, square footage of the, the lot area, which is 19,602 square feet, dividing that by 1,800 square feet, you get 11 units, right? So you get a higher yield using that calculation. But if, if you go back to this, to the, uh, standard that I mentioned, it talks about whichever is less. So if you are using whichever is less on a site like this, you would default to five units, right? And so looking at the differential between five units and 11 units, uh, that, that can be a big difference for, uh, a project, right? Uh, six units could, could make or break a project and, uh, and so, you know, the question, you know, for us, the staff, you know, it seems like there's ambiguity here because why would the code say whichever is less, whichever less is less is always going to be using the gross slot area. Um, and so I'll give you another example of how this might be calculated for a smaller lot on El Camino Real. So go to the next slide, please. So let's say we're looking at this, uh, site at five, one, two, South El Camino Real. Uh, it's a site that, uh, we've had, uh, different, uh, interested applicants, uh, inquire about, um, trying to develop a site like this or even assembling some of the parcels on this block. But we're just going to look at five, one, two, South El Camino Real. So next slide, please. So someone was to develop a mixed use project here. Uh, so here's, you know, all the, all the, um, the characteristics of the lot. So, you know, the net lot area is 6,098 square feet. Um, and what I want to get to is the residential yield at the bottom. So if we were to calculate, um, the number of residential units that you could get out of the mixed use project here. And, uh, so you would, uh, you know, calculate the, the yield from, uh, using 4,500 square feet of gross lot area. It would be one unit and under max number of residential units using that lot area, it would be three units, right? The difference is a little bit smaller here, uh, but it, it could be a big difference, right? So if you had a, a site that's 6,098 square feet, well, you know, if you want to do a mixed use project, you're, you know, I, I would think you would want to develop, you know, um, if you're going to have any kind of residential, you'd want to have at least a, a few units to be able to develop versus one unit. And so I, I present this as examples of, um, what a developer could encounter uh, when they're looking at the code and trying to determine if they can make a project work on South El Camino Real. And, uh, next slide, please. And the, the interesting thing is when you, when you look at the housing element, um, and there's a reference to, um, there's a table on this page in the housing element that talks about residential yield, uh, for affordable units on properties on El Camino Real, but there's a note that states that, um, if you can see highlighted, it says, based on one unit at 1,200 square feet of lot area allowed in the MU zone. So that mirrors what, uh, a reference before, which is the net lot area, right? Used, uh, 1,200 square feet of net lot area to determine the residential yield. And, uh, and so we, you know, I found that very interesting that, uh, you know, it refers to, to net lot area to determine that yield, but didn't reference anything on gross slot area. So, um, the reason why we present this today, um, is it is something that, that does provide a challenge to staff. Uh, you know, why it mentions whichever is less, uh, is, is not very clear in the code. Um, and, uh, we, we thought it's worth discussion with the Plan Commission. And maybe the Plan Commission, you know, has something to add or, or some information that might highlight, you know, why we do that. Um, the, the other is, you know, maybe there is the need for an interpretation or potentially a code amendment that would further clarify this, uh, because I think staff's recommendation is that, you know, we would, we would, uh, want to achieve higher residential yield for a project, um, because we think that will make a project work and, and achieve the vision of the city in that area. Um, but also achieve some of the, the residential unit counts we'd like to see to, um, to, to really, uh, achieve, um, the, the residential, um, yield that we'd like to see in our housing element. So, um, so anyways, I'd like to just, um, um, present this because I, I'd like the, the Plan Commission to be able to weigh in um, towards the end of the conversation. And I know one of the comment, um, letters that we did receive also addressed this issue. So, um, it is an issue that we've encountered maybe for, uh, the past year for, for two potential mixed use projects and did not pursue the project further just because of, um, the reduced yield that, um, uh, that's less than they anticipated. So I'll pass it on to Chris. Well, um, and then if you have any questions, also feel free to, uh, jump in, um, any of the Commissioners if you have questions on this.
Okay. Well, let me ask, uh, the other, because this is, this is, this is interesting distinction. Does anyone have any questions for Gabriel or Christopher at this point?
I actually do. Um, Chris and, um, Gabriel, in our general plan, um, is there reference to the purpose of the MU zone? And is there also in our, um, well, let's, let's start there. The whole reason we went to the MU zone was to satisfy our lack of housing. And in our housing element, anywhere would it say, um, that we are trying to maximize the resident potential um, component of the MU zone, which would make that, or whichever smaller, non-compliant with either of those documents?
Um. Yeah, Commissioner, offhand, um, I, I think Chris was gonna, you know, say something about that.
Yeah, I was staff when the general plan was adopted and was involved in the code changes, actually that included that whichever is less language. It was something that came about in discussion with the Planning Commission because the updated general plan added the, these two density standards. Uh, prior to the 2014 general plan, we had one density standard and it was the net standard. So the, the intent was not to reduce the density for housing, um, in all our mixed use zones. So it was, it, the intent behind this, whichever is less language was to deal with situations where there is development that includes right of way, a street, which is not going to happen often. That was it. That was, that was the, the scope of why that text is inserted. Uh, so the housing element reference is reflective of what the zoning was prior to 2015 and what the density in the general plan was, uh, for, for most of our mixed use zones before.
The housing element is out of sync with the current general plan because it was, it was, uh, precluded or preceded the adoption of the general plan, Chris?
No, the housing element and the general plan are consistent. What it, what is just making things challenging for staff is this language Gabriel had, uh, presented. It could be worded more clearly. Um, I, I'm just trying to offer a little context of why that language was added. It was not added to reduce the density of housing.
Gabriel, do you mind putting up that, uh, little excerpt where it says whichever is less, so you can see it again, please?
Yeah, can we go back maybe four slides and I'll tell you when to, to stop? Keep going. There we go. Yeah.
Yes. So just to add on to what I've said, it is understood that if there are no streets on a property as part of a project, there's no public right of way, uh, right of way dedicated as part of a project, then you're not applying both standards. You're applying the net standard. Um, you wouldn't be comparing both. You'd be applying one because there is no street in that instance. That was the understanding, but I just think that the wording could be clearer in that regard.
Such as? I'm sorry, Chris. I just, um, I, I kind of think I understand half of what you're saying. That gross, using the gross square feet, are you saying that using the gross square feet is largely depre-preferred and that that is the dent, like the current, uh, residential housing density standard? And that would, that's kind of, so that's kind of what we should be using, but the 1,200, excuse me, the, um, the net area is really only for when there isn't a public right of way in front of the building?
It, it was understood at the time, intent was the almost always use the net standard. Uh, now.
Which is the lower standard? That, that, that's usually going to get us the lower number, right?
It's the higher number.
Higher number, excuse me, okay.
The higher number, which is the number consistent in the housing element and, um, now, the idea, uh, behind this gross standard, it, it helps to explain why we even have this in our new general plan now is if you have area that is devoted to a street, the idea of having this lower standard is you're, you're taking out area for a street. And to maintain the overall character of development with that reduction of area, you're reducing the density of the area on the property that's left over from taking out that street. Um, so without a street, then it's supposed to be a non-issue.
It needs to be worded to reflect that so that you can make it a non-issue.
It could be clearer. Yep.
And if we ended up usually using the number that gave us the higher, higher number of residential units, how is that going to affect the, uh, uh, commercial FAR? And is that going to make it more difficult to deal with that?
Well, commercial FAR is based, uh, on the overall size of a project. And, uh, as we are discussing in the last study session, in the current market, residential really drives the profitability of a project. So if you're able to yield less housing units, then likely projects to be smaller and it would result in just, um, less development overall.
Okay. So the way forward then is to reword it so that you can get the, the higher yield.
Yes, I do want to point out that it's, it's, I think it's important to emphasize that there's a, a rule of state law in all this. So you need to be considerate of how the, the general plan and housing element is really supposed to override zoning when there's a conflict or any, um, ambiguity i- in a situation like this where the, the state has like no net loss law. It says if you're reducing the housing density and therefore making it uh, potentially infeasible to meet your arena, then you would need to go through a process with your housing element. And that's a, um, so I think we need to be a little bit careful in, in how we review projects until we make some changes. And so I think that, that my staff, uh, my recommendation is to consider that in any interpretation.
Any more questions about this?
They have a consensus, said direction to kind of clarify, simplify and de-conflict. Chair Berlin?
Yeah, we could do this, I, I do that. I just want to make sure that the staff have any more to say on this particular issue.
No, no.
Because we can, because we can kind of get into a conversation about this issue.
Yeah, that's it. Um, and you know, we, we, you know, we'd like to hear if, if, if there are Commissioners that feel that there's some ambiguity that may need to be addressed. Um, you know, if, 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 if that's the case, we hear that maybe there's, there is some agreement that there's, there's ambiguity. What staff would do is prepare interpretation, uh, and we would take this back to Plan Commission. And you couldn't be able to consider that, that interpretation. And that interpretation would be something that the staff would recommend is, is using net lot area to determine, uh, residential yield, right? And clarifying this, uh, so it's easier for us to communicate to the development community. Um, and so, um, so I, I know there, there'll be some chance for, uh, Commissioners to, to add additional comment. And I don't know, Chris, if you were going to address, uh, anything further before the Commissioners, um, go into discussion?
No, I have, I have no further comment on the first slide that I, I provided just to, uh, my, my overall impression and the conclusion of our last study session is that not all the Commissioners had a chance to truly offer comments and there is a request to, to have another session so we could continue. Um, and we, I do have slides from the prior presentation, uh, that are hidden here. If you wanted to pull them up, we have them available. That's all that I have.
I, I think it would be good to get into this issue a little bit. Um, but let me just ask, did you have other topics about South El Camino Real that you want to make sure we covered tonight as well? Or was this kind of the main thing?
No, well, the, the Commission specifically at the last session came to some seem apparent consensus on those three items that I had in the, the first slide. And it may, if they, I, I wasn't sure if the Commission can, wanted to continue talking about that, but if, if the Commission wants to discuss that with staff, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't more material that you wanted to present to us this evening, or if this was kind of the main event for, as far as you guys are concerned.
Yeah, that, that, that's it because we didn't really get to touch on this last time. I know it was briefly touched on, but, uh, we wanted to make sure that Plan Commission could discuss this as well.
Okay, good. Well, let's do this. Let's hear from the public comment because there is some public comment on these so that we can incorporate that into our conversation and then we'll, um, spend the remainder of our time, uh, talking about the residential density here. That works for everyone. Um, if so, um, I don't think I have to formally open a public hearing. So, uh, Gabriel, um, why don't you, um, read, uh, any letters we got and I'll play the role of timer?
Great. Okay. So we did get a comment letter from Sean Dinesh and, um, it reads as follows, Dear Members of the Plan Commission and City Hall Staff, I am owner of the property at 1430 South El Camino Real at the corner of Valencia and El Camino Real. Them submitting comments regarding proposed project, we are in the process of developing for that site. Uh, Kitty Crockett, Associate Planner for the City of San Clemente, wrote the following in response to our pre-application memo with our proposed project design. Quote, "As the code is worded now, the project proposes too many residential units. Maximum number of residential units is maximum one dwelling unit per 1,800 square feet of net lot area or one dwelling unit per 4,500 gross area, whichever is less. An option would be to apply for a Plan Commission interpretation to use the net area ratio as there can also be an argument made for that interpretation," end quote. "Our intention is to transform this corner from an abandoned gas station and build a high-quality development at this corridor. A true community asset with an ex and expected 10 apartment units that would provide additional housing supply for Southwest San Clemente in which fall under 1,800 square feet net area. If the Plan Commission adopts the more restrictive interpretation for the code, then this is very likely due to economic factors. Not only will we be forced not to develop the project as planned, but that the number of housing units would drop and the developer's ability to create a high-quality project is also diminished. Additionally, it makes the overall likelihood and ability of the City of San Clemente to meet arena numbers and satisfy resident demand for more affordable housing extremely unlikely. To address this issue, we would ask the Plan Commission to support staff's recommendation to interpret the maximum number of residential units aspects of the code to use the net area calculations. This would help to clarify key aspects of the code and allow this and a number of other property owners to have a clear set of guidelines to utilize as they move forward in the development process. It will additionally reduce the demands on staff and Plan Commission in the long run. Thanks for your consideration. I welcome any of you to reach out to me to learn more about our project, Sean Dinesh." And we have, uh, one other comment. This comment is from Mark McGuire and it reads as follows. "Honorable Chair, members of the Plan Commission, unfortunately though perhaps the relief to the Plan Commission, I have not had time to go through the new EPS draft report in detail and there is lots of new info. I respectfully feel this item warrants a couple of Plan Commission meetings. I like the, I like the idea that any fee going forward would be on a square foot, uh, per square foot basis. So small market units pay less than large units when subject to the fee, but the proposed new fee is much higher than past projects have paid. Also, I was glad to see that the new EPS report looks at mixed use projects, but I question the notion of the commercial retail components of these projects more than pays for the cost of that component. Perhaps a small boutique space on Del Mar, but not in the most locations and not in today's retail climate. Just look at the vacant space in past, um, mixed use projects in North Beach and on Estrella. The commercial is often a lost leader." Which brings me to a final comment that actually relates to the study session. I wholeheartedly agree with Nick Buchanan's comment that the percentage of commercial required for mixed use should be reduced in several locations, not just South El Camino Real, and it should be a percentage requirement, not a minimum FAR. The current requirement may work in the T-zone, but is a hindrance to quality projects on deep lots in North Beach. In addition to South El Camino Real. Thanks for the time you take serving San Clemente and thanks for considering these comments. And that is, um, the end of the comments we've received.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me, uh, throw it open to the commissioners and, and, um, see if people, um, have items they want to discuss. Commissioner Brown?
Well, uh, I was looking at originally some of Chris's, uh, staff comments that coming into the night and, and I guess, um, the one thing that I think to me is low bearing fruit in a way is the ceiling height and the coastal views issues that Chris brought up. And the fact that we should be able to, even the architectural field recommended that, you know, we, we now in this area have to go all the way to council for a conditional use permit to go up about two, two feet or so, about thirty-five feet or so. If the number is right. Which should be rolled back down to the planning commission and back into an area by right. There was a lot of emotionalism and politics involved when we went through that whole zoning amendment. And the, uh, evolved today, which is actually ten ten South El Camino Real, which is Nick Buchanan's project. You know, that extra two feet or so allows you to stuff the roof, get a good product, peak the roof, not have a foot and well on the top of, you see in top of ten ten and allow to have an extra ceiling height without the special trusses the end order. So that the commercial, the, the residential part of it, which is the profit end of it, is cheaper to build. And so I would, I would say that I would support, you know, generating something to go forward to, to council to to get that less restrictive and get it out of the, the council bandwidth and the extra, uh, span time required, uh, to get to a decision for a lot of this stuff down here in El Camino Real. Same with, I think, the coastal view thing, as I watched that project and Arzonia, three or four years ago evolved. And I'm gonna try to paraphrase the famous Bart Randall quote. Wade and Bart, but, um, you know, here we are, we're trying to minimize some ocean view obstruction on a ten or eleven lane freeway, which only one lane you can actually look out over and even see the project. And to me, that was the epitome of, uh, common sense where there wasn't a lot of common sense driving the, the politics of that project. So I think the coastal view thing, I would support relaxing, you know, with words of attempt to or should try to, but somehow that particular interpretation out that came out of C, G-PAC got solidified and all of a sudden it couldn't violate. So that part of the area that, that Chris brought up, the ceiling height, I think we should bring that back from council as a CUP and back into the planning commission arena to make, make it easier for, for a project to go forward. The commercial FAR, I know Mark had a good point. Maybe we should discuss that more of where is, we, we kind of tend to go to a one size fits all FAR. When in fact, I think, you know, north and south El Camino Real versus the T-zone, maybe merits of, of, you know, a lower FAR. We certainly haven't seen plethora of development in North El Camino Real out, out beyond the historic district if we go up. We've had a few specific projects here and there, bed and breakfast and all of that. So I think we could, we could spur or spur or entice more development in the North El Camino Real from follows added down all the way through El Portal down towards, uh, down towards North Beach. And so I, I would be supportive of, of a discussion of reducing the FAR. Parking standard reduction, tough, tough question to answer. And I don't know how you do the FAR reduction might drive some of that, but that's kind of my comments that to try to answer what Chris brought forward in the last study session. You know, from going into the night. The other comments that you guys, the, the staff brought up. We, we constantly, we need to harmonize the housing and all that zoning ordinance in the general plan. And when we, we need to go through and call, we need a Chris Wright call through, find two calls. Where are all these less than bribe things or greater than that when we want that surrogates or subjugates the original obtain of the general plan and like Jim, your room and brought up. Going in principles of the MU three, one, three, two zone, north, south El Camino Real. We made those focus areas deliberately to try to develop, to get rid of those thirty year old empty gas stations. And so if the devil's in the detail and if it's an impediment the staff, the counter day in and day out, we need to get that on the map. That's enough. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, um, Commissioner Wu.
Oh, yes. Um, well, first of all, I think, you know, if we look at the overall history and the study from the establishment of MU three, four, two development standards. For the last, uh, um, about a six or seven years, we've seen the development on ten ten Santiago. Uh, we have a project that just to clear the design review subcommittee at the shoreline dental. We had another project just to clear the design review subcommittee, uh, that is a, um, uh, Valencia project, uh, on the gas, on the existing gas station. And then, um, we understand there's an upcoming project on the other side of Valencia. So overall, I think the amount of a development is encouraged. Um, those developments happen not just at, uh, South El Camino Real, but also at a pretty much every city gateway. And I'm encouraged to see those developments. And so, so I think overall our new general plan along with the, the zoning are coming with it. They take effect and they have due to some positive uh, growth in a, in a, in a city and to improve the, the situation. Uh, on South El Camino Real right now, um, the only two vacant lots are the, the Valencia lot. The current vacant, but there will be a proposal coming up to us. And then in addition to that, across the street, in between and now shoreline dental and, uh, seven of the gas station, they are the only two vacant lot, why is going to have, have something to happen? And then, um, beyond that, we have a few properties, maybe they appear to be undeveloped. Um, but all, all of these happening with being five, six years, um, this is, this is a good speed. I think, uh, a general plan takes effect for, you know, it's, it's for two decades. Um, within sixty years that we see so many, uh, we see those development. I think it's a, a, it's a good sign after those, uh, um, the general plan of development standards actually works. Um, with that said, uh, um, there are quite a few things that we can learn from the past experience and, and a lesson. So, um, we're probably not going to be limited to the, the three items, um, owners versus slide. So I want to talk about the overall, um, evaluation or my understanding of the development standards and see what we can do or what we can recommend to the city council to make it even better and to encourage more um, development and the qua- quality development to meet our, further meet our, um, general plan goals. Now, um, a direct response to the, the, the question raised by, um, by the staff and by the, by the public on the uh, residential density, um, I'm surprised that even, uh, it even becomes a question because, uh, it's always the next. Uh, unless there's a subdivision involved, um, in other words, if there's some dedication of land to the, to the public right of way. Or maybe some, in some cases, a dedication of, uh, land to, uh, open space. And then in that case, then growth, growth acreage coming, uh, coming into play. Otherwise, it's always net, ten ten Santiago uses net area. So I never thought that gross area would play any role on this core because every infrastructure, the public right of way are already there. So it's very simple for me, uh, um, you know, if someone has a, a, a a big parcel of land, there's subdivision, there's dedication of a street, whether eventually public road or whether they're private street, but they're public right of way, or they set aside large area, area as open space and private open space. The city should not punish them for doing that. And in, in fact, that's kind of the the development pattern we should encourage that people can make more compact development and leaving much of an area, uh, as an open space. For example, if it uh, if they were there to, to, um, for whatever reason, it may, it could be a, a biological resource, it could be a terrain that's not suitable for development. So instead of encouraging them to spread out to cover every inch of land, we should encourage them to have more sustainable, more compact development. And we shouldn't punish them for concentrated development in a small area, uh, suitable area, uh, while setting aside another area for public right of way and open space. So I think that whichever less is, actually should be whichever greater. But again, um, if there's no public road dedication or open space dedication she involves, then the gross acreage, the gross area does not apply, uh, from the beginning. So that's my, uh, my, my comment on that. In fact, I think the maximum number of residential units, the whole thing is, is redundant, redundant. Uh, what it does is to prevent developers to develop smaller units. Um, uh, you know, one dwelling unit per eighteen, eighteen hundred square feet of lot, net lot area for MU three, point two zone, that will almost force, um, a developer to develop units at about two thousand square feet on average. Otherwise, they're giving up, they're giving up opportunities to build more floor area because they cannot get more, more number of units. So they have to, um, jack up the, the floor area, uh, to take advantage of the FAR. We have some challenge to reach that full potential FAR one point five. And the part of reading is the parking required. And another reason right here in terms of the number of units to be provided is, is this maximum number of residential units. If we don't have it, then, uh, developing, develop a smaller unit, say a thousand, uh, no, twelve hundred. Right now, it just doesn't pay out. And so they have to um, to make it a financial, financially feasible, they al- almost have to build eighteen hundred, twenty-five hundred square feet on average. Well, depending on the number of bedrooms they are. So I think we can actually look into it because the overall intensive development is governed by FAR. And then we also have a parking requirement. As long as they can meet those requirements, why we limit the number of building units they produce? And it's, it's kind of intuitive, it's kind of productive for us to provide more housing for the city. So that's my response on that. Um, the other development stands I wanna, I wanna speak about is, um, uh, parking. I think, I think, uh, the, no, I would like to make a recommendation that we make a shared parking a, a norm. Um, um, in fact, so we, we have, I think Jennifer is, uh, a certified transportation planner. It's, it's a piece of cake for, for our staff to, to to create a internal policy of doing parking, a shared parking analysis in power. Applicant can still hire outside applicant, outside consultant to produce their parking analysis. As long as they stay with a guideline we pro- we produce. And then, because that will reduce the cost of, uh, that will reduce the number of parking to be provided and therefore help the development. Um, that's parking, um, uh, in terms of the height limit, I, I'm of opinion that we should, we should leave it as is. Uh, I drive on, you could say the vibe, uh, a lot. And every time I see ten ten Santiago, I think it's the right height. And it's right there about, uh, getting into the horizon. And I think if it, if it was two, two feet higher, it may just break that horizon. You know, so I think it's, it's, I'm glad that, um, this project was built this way. Um, and I think the height is right. Uh, also noted that, uh,
Commissioner Wu?
Ten to Santiago, yes.
Uh, excuse me, I just want to make sure that, um, all the commissioners have a chance to chime in if they wish to. Um, so, um, uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to put you on pause and make sure we, we go through the whole um, circle so that we have enough time for everybody who might want to comment. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thanks, Jim. Can you hear me okay? I'm having some technical issues on my end and I apologize. But if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, thank you. I, um, well, you know, this is one of those things where, you know, we're talking about, um, you know, establishing rules, uh, for development and, you know, just to, wanted to make sure that we're all mindful of, you know, our function here and that, you know, when we, when we're chiming in on policy and regulation, uh, you know, staff takes that and considers it and drafts ordinance and it becomes, uh, something that we use as our tool, um, to, to guide developers, development. Um, we have a reference point that is codified, which gives us our standards and then we talk about it. And we often, um, apply discretion and deviate from those standards. It's not uncommon. That's our function. Uh, not to bend the rules all the time, but to see how a certain land use uh, proposal will work for the community or fit in, right? So there are some key points here, uh, that the commissioners have made as well as public speakers. You know, I am and staff can take this how staff would like to, but I am more, um, about, you know, finding balance in development. So when it comes to hard rules for FAR, uh, versus turning away a potential development, a good development of a, of a property, you know, I would want to lean towards a percentage and have balance. And that's the way I, I think it should be whether there's not enough, you know, commercial in that balance, you know, and, and would be considered loss leader by some. My response to that would be, that's more of a, you know, creativity and marketing burden on the developer, you know, we try to make it work in our mixed use areas and I, I like, I like that. But no, no model is going to be exactly the same on every property. And, you know, the parking has been an ongoing issue, uh, for, since I've been around, uh, and it's not uncommon in many, uh, especially coastal cities. So I, I, I agree that, uh, you know, a shared parking, um, um, you know, a reciprocation, uh, could be effective. And some sort of a, an analysis and, and comprehensive plan as to availability and resource, uh, I think would serve us well. And to have that available for developers, at least to, you know, put more focus on, you know, what exactly we're going to do with parking. To Commissioner Wu's point. And, uh, height, I, I share that, uh, that thought that Commissioner Wu shared, uh, you know, I think heights are good the, the way it is. And again, it's a standard, we stick with the standard and then, you know, as each project comes through, we consider it. Uh, and, um, whether or not it's appropriate and go from there. Um, Commissioner Brown, I, I had a question. Uh, when you mentioned, uh, relaxing coastal view standards, did you mean, you know, were you suggesting that language be placed or recommended to staff to do so? Or was that just more of a personal feeling? Because that's something we could massage tonight, maybe offer up to staff.
Well, I think the coastal view thing got blown out of proportion. There's, there's a one or two liners from the G-PAC that they got into the into the ordinance or into the general plan. And I think we could modify that a little bit of actual wording, like where feasible or max extent possible. Somehow when it got into the particularly the, the ten ten South El Camino Real project, all of a sudden this became a big hardened deal. And I think, uh, I think we could modi- I think the intent of the G-PAC was, yeah, just take a look at coastal views a little bit. And somehow that got elevated to this project because there's a lot of politics behind it.
Yeah, I was, I was involved in those discussions.
Soft change or staff some back with some soft wording that could make it formidable.
Uh, I was involved in those discussions in the G-PAC and, and then later in the, when we were talking about the planning commission. And it was very clear at that time that the intent was not to restrict building heights down on El not to restrict building heights down on El Camino Real, you know, down below, but to stop the proliferation of buildings that were building right up against the freeway. And essentially, not essentially, actually creating walls on the freeway. So you'd be driving and you're seeing kind of this, you know, out of the corner of your eye, this expansive ocean view. And then bang, you hit the Ralphs and the Ralphs has like a wall built up there. And for a while, you can't see anything, just looking at a wall instead of this lovely ocean view. So so that the this notion of an individual property sort of down below, kind of going up and touching the the ocean, that was invented actually in the discussions about um, you know, the ten ten South El Camino Real. That was that was a new distinction at that time. So so the the intent of the general plan anyway, and the intent of creating that was we just don't want these big chunks of view blocked out by these buildings, really, that are being built on the east side of El Camino Real and and built up high. You know, that was that was the intent of that. And it's been kind of, you know, uh, you know, it's evolved since then, I think, beyond what the intent was, the original intent was.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Well, that could be something, uh, you know, that we could put some energy into, kind of clean that up a little bit. Because, you know, after us, you know, that 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 wisdom, that knowledge could be lost. And, you know, if we don't have clarity on that and that's not, you know, memorialized somewhere, um, that could be misinterpreted, you know. I so, you know, I'm with you, Mr. Brown, and and I hear you, Mr. Ruland. I think, you know, the intent is clear. But, you know, to relax a little bit, again, it goes back to discretion and a case by case. So if planning commission and or city council is is looking at each project, you know, that's good. We've got a sign view subcommittee as well. You know, there's some, there's some mechanisms that are in place to protect that, but not to, you know, create such a hard rule that, you know, we stifle development, you know, when we're talking about, you know, being so specific on what you must do. You know, it's more like these are our standards and this is, you know, what you could possibly do, but there's a process, you know. So that's that's my take on it. Um, but generally, there's a, there's a lot of good language in here. I would not be opposed to continued discussions, just looking at the time. Jim, I um, it's hard to kind of fit all of this in. It's an important topic. So I'm definitely not opposed to talking about it again. Love to button it up, but I just think there's more to it than we've been able to conclude on today.
Well, I'll chime in for just a second. And and I I think it's good to stay focused on kind of what what what's our purpose here in South El Camino Real? You know, and and it uh the main purpose of defining this development area in the general plan was to, you know, get rid of what is was kind of considered a blighted or at least borderline blighted area, empty lots, buildings that were not being, you know, improved or kept up very well, things like that, and making that a much more vibrant area. And while we were at it, it was the the idea was, you know, hey, we'll make it a more walkable environment. We'll have some commercial in there, which mostly will serve the residents there. But we want to, you know, the we it was felt that the reason mixed use was chosen by, you know, G pack and city council in this area was it was felt it was going to be the best way to encourage development and get rid of these kind of blighted areas. So I think what we so that I think that's kind of our focus, that 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 ought to be our focus. And I think when we look at some of these things, it's a matter of, you know, we've got a little history now. We know how a project, you know, to its God, we see that development there is difficult. And we, you know, not that we should lower our standards, but we need to reduce the friction a little bit in order to to fill what the fulfill what the general plan has in mind for that area. So um, yeah, it it sounds like in any way, for instance, it it that that it's that that more dense number was always the intent. My only concern would be, you know, do we still have enough room for commercial? We're not, you know, giving short shrift to, you know, the commercial. We have mostly um housing and then one small office. That is probably not going to be the intent we have. But I I it doesn't sound like others are overly concerned about that. Um, I think the building height enters into it. Uh, all the information we got at the time from architects about what the building height is, is that extra two feet is important. Yeah, it's more of a minimum or or not much more than a minimum for mixed use. So, uh, you know, my feeling is is it's probably appropriate to raise it. We can certainly look at it in the context of, you know, how it might affect freeway views and everything. But it uh it seems like it would help to encourage what we what the plan is of the general plan to do in that area. And we we've we're whatever we are, six or seven years into the general plan now, over twenty five percent. We have one building there and that one was a struggle. So um, yeah, it it seems like we need to do some tweaking, which is fine. You live and learn and go and improve the rules to make it a little easier. So um, that was my thinking on it. So Chris, um, I want to let you um give a comment.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm just gonna focus on the residential density question and the verbiage, whichever is less. I'm all for, uh, like you said, the purpose is to encourage redevelopment in that area and making it whichever is more. But uh I see Mal is on online now. Something that we want to consider is this may not be an interpretation issue, but a change of code. And I don't know if if it's if it's, I don't know if it's that unclear that we could just make an interpretation to to change that, or we should just propose a change of code. And again, uh, maybe Gabriel could talk to Mal about that. That's it.
Okay, uh, we got a, we got just a minute or two left, Bart. I want to make sure you got uh you got a word in.
Oh, I'd like to hear from uh Chris, actually, right on exactly Chris Kaczynski's comment was. Is an interpretation enough to solve the problem on um the residential density?
I I do think that we'd want to consult with Mal on this. Uh, in particular, I had mentioned that there's housing element law, state state law provisions. And you'd want to consider that, um, you know, in presenting anything to the commission so that you have a complete um picture to make, uh, to give staff direction.
Okay, very good. I don't think we've given you a lot of clear clear direction here tonight. But I want to say that I'm comfortable with the the net calculation, um, ninety nine, ninety nine percent of the time. Um, and we are out of time, it looks like. Um, well, I I I think I I would recommend, I hate to do it, but I think it needs to come back one more time to give Chris and staff a clear direction. I mean, we philosophized a lot tonight, but didn't give him specifics to respond to, so.
Um, so I I think that's a good point. So before we close, let's just make sure we've got the bullet points that staff that we want staff to come back with, that we're going to give them firm answers on. And, you know, clearly, one of them is going, you know, the net versus gross calculation. You know, what, you know, pick pick one or or rephrase it in a way that makes makes more sense. It sounds like views was that that subject has come up. Um, or and slash ceiling height probably or or roof height. Um, and the far FAR versus percentage for the commercial areas. So I think that those are four bullet point areas that sounded that that we were discussing to resolve. So first, let me ask staff, is that clear to you, those four bullet points?
They are, I think what would help is in the in the minutes in our our PowerPoint. Is there anything that were that were incorrectly characterizing the understanding of the commission?
Not to my mind.
Pretty much comfortable with, you responded to our previous comments. And one thing about the height is we can always put a stipulation on um percentage of the roof that is actually parallel to the freeway and blocks view when you get a ridge that is perpendicular to the freeway view. Only the ridge is pointing up and very little view is blocked. So there are some tools we could use to mitigate um uh problems with that.
Okay.
So I and I guess maybe one more bullet point is really more more for us to come back with. I think that we need to give you, besides giving you our kind of final straw vote on those issues, is maybe, you know, whether we, from that, we want to make a recommendation to city council that they institute a zoning change to incorporate whatever our recommendations are to you. So that might be a bullet point for us to, you know, cover and discuss at the next study session. Does that sound all right to everybody?
Great.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. We we only had actually thirty minutes to talk about it as a commission. So um, I I agree with the box that need to come back so we can discuss some further on each item.
The staff inputs tonight from some of their conflicts at the counter were very valuable. I think we need to be concerned.
Yeah. All right, then, um, I think staff has what they have and they'll come back to us for another study session. And um, well, we can hopefully wrap it up to take it to the next level. Um, so I will close our study session meeting or adjourn that meeting and go ahead and get started with our um regular meeting. So um, uh, I will call to order the regular planning commission meeting received San Clemente, California for Wednesday, March third, twenty twenty one. Um, we have the pledge. Um, Bart, would you mind saying the pledge for us today? And I'll suggest that everybody else go on mute while he leads us in the pledge.
Let's uh everybody mute so we can mouth to the uh um pledge, hand in your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, item three is the uh is the role. So Gabriel, could you call the role for us? Sorry, Gabriel, you're on mute. You're on mute, Gabriel. We can't hear you.
Sorry, I was having some issues with Zoom.
Okay, that is the sign of our times, so, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Chair Pro Tavu.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell.
Here.
And Chair Ruland.
Here.
Item four, special orders of business, we have none. Item five is our minutes. We have one um set of minutes um to approve from our February seventeenth meeting. Is there, are there any changes or motion to approve?
I think the motion to approve.
The ones A second.
Motion by Brown, second by Blackwell. I'll call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And Ruwan votes aye, minutes passed unanimously. Uh, item six, oral and written communications. Members of the public who may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.san-dash-clemente.org slash PC public comment. Transferred by three P M on planning commission meeting days is recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Uh, Gabriel, do we have any public communications for items that are not on the agenda?
There are no comments for this item, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is the consent calendar. We have nothing on our consent calendar. And item eight is our public hearings. Public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. And we have one item in our public hearings, zoning amendment, PLN nineteen dash zero three two inclusionary housing. And Jennifer Savage will be taking us through that.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. If uh our I T team can assist me and pull up the PowerPoint for item eight A. Thank you. Uh, so this evening, we are in discussing our inclusionary housing program. Uh, this effort is to update the program, um, which does include a component of that, which is the inclusionary housing fee. Uh, and I will go through what staff's short presentation will be this evening. And please keep in mind that we do have our two consultants from EPS uh who are here to answer any questions that we might have. Next slide, please. So this evening, staff wanted to go over five quick points. Um, one is the city's housing strategy, uh, the planning commission recommendation that staff is recommending the planning commission take tonight, and then three components of that, which are the zoning ordinance changes, uh, the alternative in Luffy, the changes to that, and then the overall inclusionary housing program changes. Next slide, please. Uh, oop, that's not the current one, um, but I will go ahead and run through it without changing slides. Um, so San Clemente's current housing strategy is in our fifth cycle housing element. Uh, there's seventeen programs in total, one of which is the inclusionary housing program. And we have actually twelve ongoing programs, four completed programs, and one in a program that's in process. And the reason we wanted to present this tonight is to highlight, uh, really, that the inclusionary housing program is one of several programs. Another way to look at it is it's one of several tools that the city can use to support and encourage affordable housing. It's not the answer, uh, and it's not the only tool, but it is an important tool based on past experience and potential future impact. Then in regards to our next housing element, our housing element update, um, which is not um part of this evening, but does come into play uh in terms of inclusionary housing, is the six cycle housing element. And the programs that we are considering in the sixth cycle include our current programs, such as the inclusionary housing program and uh some additional programs, uh, such as boosting the production of ADUs, uh, streamlining housing projects, uh, and then also removing any additional impediments to housing developments that we've found over time. Next slide, please. So again, tonight's focus is not the overall housing strategy. It's not the housing element update that we will come back to you um in the next few months to discuss. Um, but rather, it is the inclusionary housing program update. And we are recommending uh tonight that the uh planning commission recommend to city council the amendment of the zoning ordinance, the modification of the in Luffy, specifically the methodology and also the amount, and then also updating the inclusionary housing program in uh in as a whole. And I'll go through each of those now. Next slide, please. So first, the zoning ordinance changes, um, which is why you have a zoning amendment before you tonight. And right now, the zoning ordinance says fifteen percent of affordable of units are required to be affordable. And we do want to modify that to say four percent to be consistent, um, not only with the the housing elements current inclusionary housing program at four percent, but also based on feedback that staff received during this joint study sessions, where there seemed to be a little bit more support uh with keeping the four percent affordable unit requirement. Uh, there are four ways to satisfy uh this program requirement. The keeping in mind that the program requires construction of affordable units and then provides alternatives. And specifically, there are four different ways to satisfy the inclusionary housing program requirement. In your attachments that you have tonight, you will notice a typo uh in modifying the zoning ordinance of providing red line changes and then moving that information into your resolution and then the draft resolution for uh council. You'll see that there is a sentence that hat is noted here, uh, three options for providing affordable units, et cetera. And we would want to strike three and put four, um, given that there are four options. And you'll find those um changes are required on page twenty one and one sixty one of your attachment. Twenty one um is a um adoption document, so we would definitely change that as part of a motion. And attachment seven was just showing red lines um to the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. So the in Luffy uh changes. So primarily, we are updating the methodology. You may recall that our current You may recall that our current inclusionary housing program in the housing element has two components to determining the fee. The first one C is relatively simple. It's one percent of construction costs. But then the second component is a little less simple, and it's actually comparing the cost of constructing an affordable unit with the affordability gap or the subsidy required or needed to actually support the development of an affordable unit. So the changes that we're proposing tonight are that there be just one calculation, not those two calculations to compare. And we are proposing that that particular fee is updated annually automatically and through the same index that our current development fees use to be updated every year for that consistency. And then finally, in terms of the fee, we do recommend that we apply it per square foot of the market rate units, where before we had a per unit fee. This per square foot application would mean that a smaller unit, say an eight hundred square foot unit, would pay less of an in-lu fee than, say, a four thousand square foot home. So there should be some equitable benefit to that, which was a concern that was raised during our study session. So again, the changes to the in-lu fee are updating the methodology, creating one calculation with automatic updates and applying it on a square foot basis. Next. So the overall inclusionary housing program changes include two components. One is identifying how to award the funds. And then the second one is actually updating the text for the inclusionary housing program that's included in our housing element. So in terms of the recommendations for awarding funds, those are start on page one fifty six of your planning commission packet. And the process, or rather, the recommendations for awarding the funds include three components. One is priorities, two is criteria, and the third is process. In terms of priorities, it's identifying the type of projects and the population that's considered priorities. And in order to make these recommendations, staff and E P S relied on previous surveys as well as other data that was identified through other housing related documents. In terms of criteria, the primary criteria would be making sure that awarding funds would align with the priority project types and population, among other criteria. And then finally, the the recommendation is to use a process, a formal process, to advertise that there are funds available. And that's often called as a NOFA or Notice of Funding Availability. In terms of the text update, it begins on page one sixty three of your packet. And it's updating the program description that's in the housing element to really bring modernize that language and bring a lot of the data and numbers up to date. Next slide, please. So again, a recommendation for this evening is to recommend the city council to update that inclusionary housing program, to amend the zoning ordinance and to modify the in-lu fee methodology. Now, the planning commission recommendation would be contained in one resolution. But you will know note that the attachments to your resolution include two items for council. One is a resolution in terms of the in-lu fee itself and setting that in-lu fee. And then the other item is an ordinance to actually amend the zoning ordinance. There are some changes that should be incorporated into your recommendation. One is to add a section to your planning commission resolution. And specifically, that's the section from page twenty one of the council ordinance that says the planning commission is recommending the inclusionary housing program update as specified in the report that you have this evening from E P S. The second change is modifying the council ordinance to strike three and add four. And then the third is to modify the planning commission resolution to correct a typo. The recommended fee level is seven point three six or seven dollars and thirty six cents per square foot, not seven dollars and sixty three cents. So just a small typo there. And those corrections would be on page eleven, thirteen, and fourteen. We would also update that particular dollar amount per square footage in the council documents. And there are several places there, which is why the pages aren't listed here. And next slide, please. And previous slide. That and staff presentation. Again, both of our consultants from Economic Planning Systems are available this evening. If the commission has any questions of staff or our consultants. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Does anyone have any questions of Jennifer or the consultants? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, the seven dollars and now thirty six cents. I think E P S recommended that down in the small print footnotes, several C P I index or building index to be used on an annual basis. And as staff solidified, yeah, to further clarify to council exactly what index we would recommend in the ordinance to modify this fee each year. Because some of those can be very impactful over time, depending which one you use. So what is the expert's real recommendation for which index to use that adjusts that figure?
Yeah, so staff is recommending that we use the same index that's used to update our building fee to keep that consistency. And that's the construction cost index from the engineering news record. And then that way, when we add this fee to our development fee schedules, it's just a consistent update with the rest of our fees.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Crandall.
Jennifer. We're looking at these and is there a point where the in-lu fee would not be an option? The twenty unit project, a hundred unit project, at what point is the in-in-lu fee counterproductive? In other words, if we could get the units, which we have to have and we need, but they want to use the inland fee. How's that regulated?
So there's just a minimum number of units for actually triggering that in-lu fee and specifically just triggering the the applicability of including affordable units in a project, but there's no upper limit. So there's no limit that says if you're doing a hundred or more units on a project, you have to build them on site. They can, at this point, use the in-lu fee if they so choose.
Would the city have any option to force them into building the units rather than using the in-lu fee?
Not as the program's written now. You know, something that's happened in the past, and this is past history, so it doesn't guarantee the future. But larger projects in the past, we did have negotiations happen, often through development agreements. And it was through those conversations that we were able to negotiate with developers to either provide the units on site or find land that they could donate for affordable units. So that's a potential outcome for larger projects in the future. It's not written in our in our program right now.
No mechanism currently to handle that situation.
No force of hand, no.
And then if you're doing an apartment project, which is not for sale and just rental, those people would pay the same in-lu fee regardless of the fact that if they built the unit, they could supplement the cost of it, obviously, by running it below market rate, but it's going to be the same fee? Apartments versus for sale units?
Yeah, it is. And it also will be the same fee across sizes. So it's meant to and calculated to be equitable in terms of size. And the the consultants did address whether units would be for sale or rent and how that may or may come into play.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, thanks, Jim. Jennifer, can you, just for the sake of public as well as my own, can you walk through the one calculation methodology? Slide that'd be great, just to just to walk walk through the the method.
I don't have a slide available, but I'll just quickly check. Darren and Julie, do you? I didn't ask. We didn't ask for you to provide slides, but if you have one, let me know. In terms of the calculation, I'm sure that Julie and or Darren can walk through it a little bit more. Just to clarify, Commissioner Blackwell, are you asking the methodology for that's proposed?
Yeah, I wanted to see how that would actually be better than using the other the other way. You know, the two points that you had mentioned, you know, as an alternative, why this would be a better approach.
Yeah, so there's definitely, as you might have have noticed in the report, there is a number of calculations that go into the fee. And there are some differences between the fee that we would calculate with our current affordable affordability gap and then the actual process or the methodology for the proposed fee. Julie, would you be able to point out some of the differences in key components of the proposed methodology?
Yes, sure. Hello, Commissioners. Julie Cooper with E P S. So the original, when we originally came to the planning commission and the city council last September, what we had demonstrated is that the affordability or the sorry, the feasibility gap, affordability gap for developing a prototypical two-bedroom rental unit that would be affordable to low-income households is approximately two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars, I think, more or less. And what that translates to when you apply the four percent inclusionary requirement is something in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars per unit. And so if we were just simply using that as the methodology, we would say that for every market rate unit, the developer would be required to pay ten thousand dollars per unit in order to meet their in-lu requirement for providing affordable housing. The feedback that we received from some of the stakeholders we talked to and city staff is that the it didn't quite seem equitable that a twenty eight hundred square foot house, for instance, would pay the same fee as a nine hundred square foot apartment, you know, that they would all be paying ten thousand dollars per unit. So what we did was we converted the fee to a per square foot fee. So it's a per square foot amount that will be paid on the square feet of market rate housing that's developed. The way we calculated the fee is we looked at the how much. So we started with a prototype for sale development. So the prototype is a twenty eight hundred square foot, four-bedroom, single-family house. And we said, what would they owe if they had to provide four percent of their units as as sing- oh, sorry, what would be the affordability gap for providing the the inclusionary units that would be provided for such a such a project? So if you were, you know, building a hundred for for sale, single-family homes, you'd have to provide four affordable units, and they each are about, again, two hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of affordability gap. And so I don't have the I should should have pulled up the report, so I had all the math in front of me. But you come to the amount that the that they would have to actually pay to subsidize those units. And then what we did was we divided that across the total square footage of market rate housing that was being developed in this prototype development, which is twen- two hundred and eighty thousand square feet. So that's how we get to our seven, seven thirty six, right? Yes, seven thirty six amount. And from there, what we were able to determine or what we what we noted in the footnote is that that per square foot amount, if a nine hundred square foot apartment is paying that amount, market rate apartment, they're paying less than the ten thousand dollars per unit that would be the full affordability gap, the the four percent of the affordability gap that they would owe. So actually, it provides a bit of a benefit to smaller units by us by calculating the fee as if it was having to be paid by a larger unit. So I hope that that's somewhat. I don't know if I would say clear, but I hope that that is gives you some idea of the the approach that we took to calculate this.
Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, that does. It gives it gives a good idea of how the method is applied. And obviously, there'd be, you know, each each project would be a little different, the numbers would be a little different, but the ratios would be the same, right?
So the the idea is that we're we're picking a single fee. So the about, you know, again, about seven forty a square foot. And so it does mean that larger units on a per unit basis are paying more in a fee than smaller units. But in general, we are trying to get closer to actually raising the amount of revenue that would be required for actually subsidizing the apartments, you know, subsidizing the units rather than affordable units that are required under the inclusionary requirements. But again, there is a slight benefit to smaller units where they are they're paying a slightly lower fee on a per unit basis, so they're not quite meeting the exact four percent, if that makes sense. That's the benefit that's being provided to them.
Yeah. Okay, is this a common practice or is this method widely used? Or is it kind of a mixed bag out there?
It's definitely a mixed bag. A lot of cities do levy a more of a per unit fee. They aren't necessarily providing this exact kind of differential. But this is not, it's not like we're not like completely going out in left fields here. There's definitely, you know, some some precedent for this. But but yeah, it's it's definitely a mix in terms of how different cities are are applying their fees.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And Jim, I have one more question for Jennifer. Can you walk us through, Jennifer, very quickly, how we are allocating these fees? So that application or that allocation and how it's how the fees are implemented, implemented controls are are what controls do we have?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So in terms of implementation, this is a new part of our program. And it's presented in the report from E P S, and it contains three components, priorities, criteria, and a process. So the priorities are priority project types and priority populations. So priority project types might be multifamily residential or single-family residential. And then I think the the last bullet point for priority projects are actually conversions or rehabilitations. And then in terms of priority populations, those priority populations include populations such as large families, seniors, and potentially disabled persons. Once you take, once you assess the priority project types and population, then you go down the criteria. So when there's actually a request for funds or an application for funds, we look at the criteria, and the primary component of the criteria is it does the it does the proposal address those priority populations and priority project types. The criteria also include, one moment. The criteria also include whether the proposal is committing other funding sources. So it's really, are you utilizing the cities' INLU funds to bolster the use of other funding sources? How many units the project might be providing that are affordable, or the level of affordability? So the lower income levels. And then the final criteria award is the applicant's or the proposer's history of successful projects. So there's four criteria there. And then the third component in terms of implementation is actually establishing a process to advertise that the city has funds available and is ready to award them to an appropriate project. So again, there's priorities, criteria, and that process.
I love that. When you said, under priorities, you walked us through the different priorities, and you, you said potentially disabled persons. What do we need to do to ensure that that's included? That's such an important piece. What do we need to do here? What can we do at this level to make sure that that rides through and becomes a part of this?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I misspoke with potential. So the recommendations, should you wish to ensure that the persons with disabilities are included, it would be adopting the recommended updates. There are five priority populations, and persons with disabilities is one of those five. The, the other four are families, senior-headed households, large households, which are five or more people, homeless persons, and persons with disabilities.
Okay. Now, is there a qualification process, say, for example, large households? So there would need to be an income qualification going into that, correct?
Absolutely, and that is part of the criteria.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Kozinski?
Yes, Jennifer, thank you for the lovely presentation. I just have a few questions. This INLU fee applies to new development, correct? I didn't hear.
Oh, sorry, yes, it does.
Okay, and on page 64 of 214 in your, in the presentation, it says, "The city is mostly built out, the majority of the sites that are left for development are less than 0.15 acres." And the slide before that says that the, the fee would only apply if there are six or more units built. How is, is that, what are you projecting to collect if you have to build six units, six or more units, something as small as 0.15 acres?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's not only a concern for the inclusionary housing program, but it's also a concern for providing housing in the future in general across the city. In terms of the program itself and what we might see in the future, I think it's really important to note that those, those sites that we've identified as pretty small are largely along El Camino Real. And those sites are intended to be mixed-use, if you will, and combined to make a better, a better developable property. Earlier this year, we adopted our lot consolidation ordinance, which would provide additional incentives to developments that were combined lots and created a project that would provide more units. In terms of the actual number of units that the city would anticipate seeing in the future, there are so many factors that go into future development that we couldn't provide you an accurate prediction. But we are on the, in the timeline where we do have to plan for future housing. And so along the, the street of El Camino Real, under our affordable housing overlay and the lots that are eligible for the lot consolidation ordinance, I could pull up that estimate that we had if those lots were consolidated and built at the maximum density. And I can provide that number to you later tonight.
Right, because we just went over the net square footage of a specific lot and how many units you can have on that lot. Would 0.15 acres support six-plus units?
I would have to do that quick calculation, but it's, it would be probably pretty tough, but we can provide that information in just a bit.
And then, and then one more question. The INLU fees, here in another one, another slide, 66, that we've, that it's used for new developments? Could it be used for redevelopments?
Yes, absolutely. So the priority projects that are identified in the implementation recommendations are construction of new projects, whether that's apartments or single-family homes. That doesn't preclude that it's a redeveloped site. And then the other type of prioritization is acquisition or conversion of existing units. So it, from that redevelopment question, it could be existing buildings turning into affordable units, or it could be redevelopment of a property with new construction of units.
And then one last question. Is there any other revenue stream that you can pull from other cities and building up their INLU fees or the pot that supports this housing element?
The, let's see, do you mean the inclusionary housing program? Okay, and so something of note is that prior to 2012, across the state of California, we had mechanisms, cities had mechanisms called redevelopment agencies, or RDAs. And through that funding source, we had a much larger availability of funding for supporting affordable housing development. When the state ordered the RDAs to dissolve, that dried up a lot of our funding. And if you go back into some of our funding records for projects and where funds came from, you'll see that a large component of the city's contributions came from RDA funds, not necessarily the inclusionary INLU pot.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Commissioner Will?
Oh, yes, thank you, Jennifer, for the presentation. This INLU program has not been updated since 1980, so it is 40 years, over 40 years, much needed. But thank you for that. I have a question. This item is part of that Program 5 of actually planning, you know, our housing element. The objective for the, for 2017 to 2021 includes continued implementation, public outreach, which we have done, develop a new formula, which we're talking about tonight. And then there are two additional items, annual evaluation, and developing incentives for new affordable development partnerships. Can you touch on those, other two items?
Yes, so the annual evaluation is something that hasn't been done for the past couple of years. But when we did have a housing staff, a dedicated housing planner, they were very good and consistent about analyzing our annual affordable housing unit development. Now that we are, have more staff that are focused on housing, that annual evaluation will likely occur. In terms of the incentives, that is our implementation that you have before you tonight. And why is it an incentive? It provides assurances to developers that there is a clear process to determine who would be awarded those fees in terms of priorities, and then the criteria to determine the awards. So the incentives that we have before you tonight are really the, the assurances and the clarity for awarding those fees.
Thank you. Last time the city was asked to update our housing element, we were under a four-year reviewing period. Are we going to have another round of housing elements this year?
We are. So we adopted our housing element in 2008, in 2017. And then we adopted our midterm update, or our four-year update, in 2018. Speaking with HCD as of this week, that 2018 update was considered on time. And so if we adopt our housing element that we're going through, the process to update now, if we adopt that by October 15th, 2000, I'm sorry, 2021, that will be our second housing element update submitted on time, and then we will be back into the eight-year cycle.
Okay, so we do want to make some, make a good shift with HCD. My last question is, you already answered, Chris's question is hard to predict. But if I, if I put you back eight years ago, if, if we had this program, what would, how many, how, how many additional affordable units would this program produce? With a new standard?
With...
What's your best estimate?
Okay, do you mean in terms of the difference in fee, or if we were to increase?
No, the difference of the, now, we're looking at the result. How many affordable units we can, we can get from this INLU program?
Great, thank you. So one of the, the items that EPS report looks at is actually changing the number of affordable units required in a development. So that's often referred to as a percentage. And so keep in mind that the number of affordable units currently required is 4%. In the zoning code, it's 15%. So another way to ask the question is, might be to, if, if instead of applying the 4% number of units required in a development, we were applying the 15%. You can imagine that 4% is almost a quarter of that 15%. Keep in mind that the last several years, affordable units have not been built on-site. And in fact, they've been, developments have been paying the INLU. Think of Marblehead Coastal Development. In that instance, they were with the 4% requirement somewhere in the teens, maybe 12 or 14. We can get you, get the exact number in the future. So if you imagine almost multiplying that four times, you're around 40-something affordable units. So there is a difference in using a 4% requirement and a 15% in terms of the number of units required on-site.
Okay, well, we're not talking about 15%, but even with the 4%, when we bring the, bring back the parity between these two alternatives, either on-site or pay the fee to cover the cost, that would actually get us plus-minus 4% of the, of, of the units to be affordable, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I just had one question, and I, I just may not have, you know, plugged this, plucked this out of the report myself, but we have arena numbers. And I'm just, the question that's in my mind is, if we adopt the recommendations in the report, how long is it going to take us to meet arena numbers? So like a, you know, a 10-year, 20-year?
So ultimately, that would depend on how interested developers are, right? In actually making a development happen. But you can imagine that right now, with our arena numbers being finalized, actually tomorrow afternoon, at almost 1,000 units. If, if we did indeed have interest of building 1,000 units in the city, say, over the next eight years, if you will, 4% is 40 units. And that's 4% very low income, which is the bottom tier of the income categories. And our arena numbers are actually close to 26%, should be very low income. So we would, with the 4% requirement, get 40 units, where we are really required to do at least 260, if, if not more. I don't remember the numbers exact off the top of my head.
Okay, so just to get this straight in my head, I, I, I understand, we don't know how much people are going to develop. We don't know if someone's going to come in and say, hey, we want to build affordable, affordable housing. But we don't really have, at least like a, we don't seem to have like a, with this plan, probably at least not a 10-year horizon where we would fulfill arena numbers. And, you know, that, that's kind of what I'm saying, that is that we're going to probably, with this plan, we'll probably always be lagging what arena numbers should be, or achieving what arena numbers say, say that we should be.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, let's see, any other questions for staff or the consultants? I don't see any, so why don't we move to the public here? Well, go ahead, Mike.
I just, thank you, I just quick question. This is of Jennifer. Jennifer, I am still stuck on the, the award, the, under prioritization, we had the disabled persons. Something occurred to me. If there is going to be money available to help folks, what are, what are your thoughts on having a fund available for accessibility assistance? So if there's a property owner that meets certain eligibility requirements, maybe it's income, what have you, and wants to improve the property, so there is improved accessibility to all people, especially those that need it? What do you think, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, for ADA improvements, we may want to look at a different funding source. Gabriel might be able to correct me, but I believe that CDBG funds would be a great use of funding for that particular effort.
Commissioner Blackwell, yeah, that would be correct. So we currently have a housing rehabilitation program, and that's targeted towards low-income households. And so we allocate, this, this year, we allocated $57,000 to it. Right now, we're in the process of budgeting for, for next year, for the funding available for that assistance. And typically, in the past, we provided up to about, I would say, 100, 210,000 to support that. So last year, we, we just funded it at lower levels because there was a public, Public Works project on Avenida Cabrillo, on fixing the sidewalks there. But there is a funding source, and it will be available again next year.
Okay, that's great. And you said, Gabriel, this is under, under housing, right?
Yeah, it's, it's our community development block grant allocation that we get every year. And there's a certain amount that can be used for, I guess, housing rehab assistance. And so we usually allocate between 50,000 to 100,000. And so it's, it could be provided as a loan or as a grant to, to eligible households.
Okay, well, how about, how about for, okay, for a restaurant town, or if you have, you know, a small business person who is trying to, you know, develop a new business and needs that assistance or could benefit from it, to add that extra revenue to improve a property as a restaurant town? I think some of us may be familiar with, that needs some help. So if something like that was in place, where would we fit that under? Would it be under the block grant board, or would, could it be kind of slid in as, as part of this priority list? Under the INLU fee?
Oh, for, for a commercial project, like, like a restaurant? I'm not sure. I don't think the community development block grant program may not be the best idea for like a restaurant owner because above $2,000, it triggers prevailing wage on, on the work that would be done. If it's not a housing, if it's not housing, right? So if it's commercial rehab, then there's a $2,000 trigger for prevailing wage.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and I will say, Commissioner Blackwell, if you do want additional details on the CDBG grant funds, staff would be happy to talk to you offline about it. In terms of answering your question for the inclusionary housing funds, the inclusionary housing funds are specifically earmarked for housing. So definitely not appropriate for a commercial project, even with that, that focus on persons with disabilities. But we can definitely look at other opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing. And Gabriel, I know we received a number of... And Gabriel, I know we received a number of um emails, people who wanted their emails read. So if you'll read those emails and I'll play the role of the timer.
Great. All right, start with the first comment that we received. And this comment is from Rona Henry. And the comment reads, Dear City Council and Planning Commission Members, I write, write on behalf of Welcoming Neighbor, Neighbor's Home Initiative and Ministry of Tapas Street Unitarian Universalist Congregation. While our building is in Lake Forest, many of our members live in San Clemente. We have been following the progress made by San Clemente in achieving its fifth cycle regional housing needs assessment goals and have been concerned that it met only forty-six percent of its very low income and only twenty-nine percent of its low-income housing goals. We believe that an update of the city's inclusionary housing program is in order. We think the four percent inclusionary housing requirement is too low. We re- recommend the inclusionary housing policy be changed to a fifty percent inclusionary housing requirement with seven point five percent at low and seven point five percent at very low. We note that the Economic and Planning Systems Incorporated analysis supports a fifteen percent inclusionary requirement for San Clemente's inclusionary program. We also believe that the current In-Lu-fee of one percent of construction value is too low. The EPS analysis states that the inclusionary housing fee needs to be at four percent of construction value to represent the ten thousand three hundred five dollar gap subsidy needed for affordable housing. We recommend that the In-Lu-fee be ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot or in the range of ten thousand to five thousand dollars per unit. Our research has revealed that other Orange County cities have adopted inclusionary housing policies with a fifty percent requirement and In-Lu-fee is a fifteen thousand dollars per unit. And this has not hampered building progress in their cities. They have more than met their above-moderate arena housing goals and have made more progress on their low-income housing goals. We urge San Clementes to adopt a fifty percent inclusionary requirement with In-Lu-Fees in the range of ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot. This update to its current policy will help provide more housing choices to residents of San Clemente with more limited means. The Welcoming Neighbor's Home Initiative volunteers welcome the opportunity to meet with city staff to discuss other ways we can increase affordable housing in San Clemente. If you have any questions, feel free to uh contact me. Sincerely, Rona Henry, Chair, Welcoming Neighbor's Home. Next comment, letter we received is from Reverend Kent Doss. And it reads as follows, Dear San Clemente City Council and Planning Commissioners, I'm reaching out to you to share my concern about San Clemente's inclusionary housing policy. My name is Kent Doss, I'm a minister at South Orange County Church. Several members of my congregation are senior citizens living in San Clemente. Together, we are concerned about the increasingly unaffordable cost of housing in the area and corresponding rise in homelessness. While South Orange County is generally affluent, that doesn't include all of our neighbors. Over twenty percent of San Clemente residents have extremely low or low income. Twenty-eight percent of renters in San Clemente have a housing burden over fifty percent of their income. It is time for all of our cities to ensure that working-class essential workers have access to housing. Sometimes larger societal problems feel out of control, but you have the power to, to make housing more accessible to our neighbors in need. In the housing element, I recommend the six, uh, that San Clemente require at least fifteen percent of the units in any new development be designated for affordable housing for people with very low income, seven point five percent, and low income, seven point five percent. It's not possible to include the building of affordable housing. If it's not possible to include the building of affordable housing on site, then the current In-Lu-Fee is paid to the city by the builder should increase to ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot. Thank you for your hard work and for considering how the best serve our entire community. Sincerely, Reverend Kent Doss. All right, next comment letter is from Deanna Cujo. And it reads, Dear San Clemente City Council Members and Planning Commissioners, I write to provide input on San Clemente's inclusionary housing policy. I'm a resident of San Clemente. I'm very concerned that rising housing costs increasingly make house, affordable housing out of reach for many people in our city, given that currently over twenty percent of San Clemente residents have extremely low or are, or low income. In addition, over twenty-eight percent of renters had a housing burden of over fifty percent of their income. The problem of homelessness is housing and food insecure residents in San Clemente has been woefully and embarrassingly addressed on the city level. I request that San Clemente change the way it works with housing builders and developers, as do many other cities. I would like San Clemente to require at least fifty percent of the units in the new development designated for affordable housing for people with very low income, seven point five percent, and low income, seven point five percent. It's not possible to include the building of affordable housing on site. I ask that the current In-Lu-Fees paid to the city by the builder be increased to ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot. These housing funds are critical to creating affordable housing elsewhere in the city, often built by nonprofit developers. The current fee of one percent is inadequate. Additionally, I ask that the San Clemente, that San Clemente work more proactively with affordable housing builders to develop more homes for people with low incomes in the city by creating incentives and reducing barriers to building here. We have a diverse income community here in San Clemente and our housing policies need to serve all of our residents. San Clemente has become unaffordable for far too many people. It would be nice to see that the city of San Clemente could adopt a welcoming attitude in contrast to its years of hostility towards low-income and homeless people. Sincerely, Deanna Cujo. Next comment letter is from Denise Flir, Flir, Flury. And it reads as follows, um, Dear City Council Members and Planning Commissioners, the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition consists of organizations and individuals that advocate for San Clemente to adopt policies and programs that will actually produce affordable housing for the city's lower-income residents, including the homeless. Based on the city's past performance in achieving its regional housing needs assessment goals, meaning only forty percent, forty-six percent of its very low income and only twenty-nine percent low-income housing goals, it's clear the city needs to adopt new policies and programs. The current proposal is that four percent inclusionary requirement remain. We think this is too low to ensure that there is adequate stock of housing to meet the needs of residents with lower incomes. We recommend that the inclusionary housing policy be changed to a fifty percent inclusionary housing requirement with seven point five percent at low and seven point five percent at very low. The Economic and Planning Systems Incorporated analysis supports a fifteen percent inclusionary housing requirement for San Clemente's inclusionary housing, inclusionary program. Their report states the aggregate value of the units exceeds the expected costs, including In-Lu-Fee obligations and profit expectations, even if the project were required to provide fifty percent of units at affordable rents as required under the zoning ordinance, half at fifty percent AMI, half of eighty percent AMI. We also conclude that the current In-Lu-Fee of one percent of construction value is too low. The EPS analysis states that the inclusionary fee needs to be at four percent of construction value to represent the uh ten thousand three hundred five dollar gap subsidy needed for affordable housing. We recommend that the In-Lu-Fee be ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot in the range of ten thousand to fifteen thousand per unit, um dollars per unit. We note that the uh other Orange County cities have adopted housing policies with an average of fifteen percent inclusionary requirement and an average In-Lu-Fee of ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. Even with these policies, all the cities have exceeded their above-moderate arena housing goals while making progress towards their lower income goals. San Clemente should adopt a fifty percent inclusionary requirement with In-Lu-Fees in the range of ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot because that will facilitate the building of much-needed housing for residents with very low and low incomes. The current policy did not produce the needed results in the fifth arena cycle. It's time to update the policy to be more consistent with experience of other cities who have been able to, to have more success in providing a range of affordable housing. The San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition would welcome the opportunity to meet with city staff to explore how the city could further increase affordable housing. Please let us know of any meetings regarding strategies to increase affordable homes for lower-income households in the city. If you have any questions, feel, feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Denise Flury on behalf of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. All right, uh, next comment letter is Reverend Bill Barman. And it reads as follows, uh, Dear City Council and Planning Commission Members, I'm the senior priest of Our Lady of Fatima in the fair city of San Clemente. I have served as a Roman Catholic priest in the county of Orange for forty years. I write you to reconsider your plans to keep our city healthy and holy. We are in a housing crisis that needs better choices and options. Many wonderful young couples ask our churches bless them in marriage and the church of their parents and grandparents and yet can't afford to begin their married life here because our mortgage costs are too high. We are then many times missing the blessing of their shared, sharing a newborn child with both our church and our community, but also with our schools, parks, and social groups. We need housing affordable to young married couples. We need housing for young people who have successfully graduated college and wanna work here and maybe after paying off their student loans would like to plant roots here. We need housing for those who make our lives here so delightful, for those uh to do, uh, for those to do not own a business but offer their labor to us. We would be better off as a society if those who work here lived here. They and their families would be a blessing and yes to, yes, the gospel calls us to remember the least too. The unemployed, the down on their luck, the lowly paid and faithful, our brothers and sisters and aunts and grandparents, can we make room for them too? I know we are capable of building housing, as I've seen the marvels of growing, of growth in the Orange County since nineteen fifty-six. It's a question of extending this gift creatively to more, uh, to more and the least. Thus, I ask the San Clemente City Council adopt a fifty percent inclusionary requirement with In-Lu-Fees in the range of ten dollars, fifteen dollars per square foot because that will facilitate the building of much-needed housing for residents with very low and low incomes. The current policy did not produce the needed results in the fifth arena cycle. It's time to update the policy to be more consistent with experience of other cities who have been able to, uh, to have more success in providing a range of affordable housing. The San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition would welcome the opportunity to meet with city staff to explore the city with how the city could further increase affordable housing. Please let us know of any meetings regarding the strategies to increase affordable homes for lower-income households in the city. If you have questions, feel free to contact Kathy S. Fahani at kathy.sfahani@gmail.com or at uh seven one four nine three two one one seven four. Sincerely, Reverend Bill Barman, Our Lady of Fatima Church, members of the city, uh, members of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. Next letter is from Elizabeth Heinz. And it reads, Dear San Clemente City Council Members and Planning Commissioners, I want to provide some input on San Clemente's inclusionary housing policy. I've lived in San Clemente almost a decade and love our charming Spanish village by the sea. I am concerned about the lack of affordable housing to our city's essential and low-age workers. As we've discovered during the pandemic, we rely on these workers far more than we thought. Well, at least far more than I thought. They are vital to our daily lives, risking their health and their health of their loved ones so that we can buy our groceries, teach our children, get the things delivered, tend our health, work on and in our homes and a lot more. In other words, uh, take care of us. I was surprised to learn that almost thirty percent of renters here in San Clemente use over fifty percent of their income for rent. Wow, that leaves very little food, clothes, transportation, healthcare, and all the other essentials of living. Understanding this, the simple truth is also not surprising to discover how many of our hard-working residents are housing and food insecure. We can help them by changing the way housing works for builders and developers. I require at least fifteen percent of the units in any new development be designated for affordable housing for people with low and very low income. But that is not possible and I understand that in many cases, this is not feasible. Raise the current In-Lu-Fees paid to the city by the builder, uh, be increased. The current fee of just one percent is inadequate and out of step with the ten to twenty-five percent that other cities in South Orange County are currently requiring. The one percent is simply inadequate to build anything. We can do better than that for our hard-working and essential workers. We need to work, to work proactively with affordable housing builders to develop more homes for people with low income in the city. We need our essential and low-income workers to have a home here in our wonderful beach city so they, they can continue to take care of us. With your help, I know we can do this and become a affordable place for all essential members of our community. Let's do some good for our essential workers, Elizabeth Heinz. Next letter is from the League of Women Voters and it reads as follows, Dear City Council and Planning Commission Members, League of Women, uh, Women Voters of Orange Coast supports actions to promote inclusionary housing and support the development of affordable housing for people of very low and low and moderate income. The League, the members that live in San Clemente, understand that currently over twenty percent of San Clemente residents have extremely low or low income. In addition, over twenty-eight percent of renters have had a housing burden over fifty percent of income. Our League advocacy team has been reviewing the status and degree of San Clemente's success with their fifth cycle housing elements and found that the city has met only forty-six percent of its very low and only twenty-nine percent of its low housing goals. Therefore, in line with our position on housing homelessness, we strongly recommend the city council and development of the six cycle elements require at least fifty percent of the units in any new development be designated for affordable housing. We also recommend that the In-Lu-Fees be paid to the city by developer be increased to ten to fifteen dollars per square foot. This is the opportunity to create affordable housing for all San Clemente residents. Respectfully, Chris Collins and Diane Need, co-chairs of the um the um League of Women Voters of Orange County, homeless advocacy team. Next letter is from Kathy S. Fahani. And it reads as follows, I'm a resident of North Beach and a member of the newly-formed San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. As a member of this new coalition, I'm committed to advocating for effective policies which will actually produce affordable housing in our town for low, lower-income working families. I, in my North Beach neighborhood, I see many families struggle to pay the high rents which the market commands. When families overpay for rent, there is not enough uh for life's other necessities like food, medicine, or school supplies that books for the children. But the prospect of homelessness is so terrifying. Families pay whatever they must to stay housed. As a policy maker, you have the power to change this equation. You can ensure our town adopts policies which will actually produce new affordable rental housing. You can start now by rejecting the current half-hearted proposal to amend San Clemente's inclusionary housing ordinance, which is before you tonight. As you know, a strong inclusionary housing ordinance is one of the most powerful tools the city has for creating affordable housing. The city's inclusionary housing ordinance, however, is so weak as to be ineffective. The proposal before you merely tinkers around the edges of this, of uh this weak ordinance. You should reject the current proposal and direct your planning staff to take a new approach. San Clemente needs to make more substantive amendments to its inclusionary housing, inclusion ordinance to strengthen it. In its current form, San Clemente's inclusionary housing ordinance is woefully deficient. It is far out of step with what other Orange County cities are doing to facilitate the development of affordable homes where other Orange County cities with inclusionary ordinances require an average of fifty percent of new units to be affordable for lower-income households. San Clemente ordinance requires only four percent of new units to be affordable, where most inclusionary ordinances in Orange County require In-Lu-Fees averaging ten to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. San Clemente's inclusionary In-Lu-Fee is based on the formula which results in a paltry fee that is far less what other cities receive from theirs. The staff report itself recognizes inadequacy of San Clemente's In-Lu-Fee. I quote here from the staff report, "Our current method does not provide adequate funding to support affordable housing." The staff report further describes the In-Lu-Fee as so low that it actually deters developers from constructing the affordable housing uh units in the city, the city critically needs. In conclusion, I urge the planning commission to reject the current proposal which does not do enough to give San Clemente the strong inclusionary housing ordinance it needs. Instead of passing this half measure, the planning commission should adopt the best practices and revise the city's inclusionary housing ordinance to require fifty percent of all new units to be affordable to low and very low-income households. The city should also set a new In-Lu-Fee requirement of between ten to fifteen dollars per square foot or ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars per unit. Thank you. Okay, next uh comment letter is from Sarah Spinuzzi. And it reads as follows, um, "The San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition consists of organizations and individuals that advocate for San Clemente to adopt policies and programs that will actually produce affordable housing for the city's low-income residents, including homeless. Based on the city's past performance in achieving its uh regional housing arena um needs uh, I'm sorry, regional housing needs assessment goals, meaning only forty percent of its very low income and only twenty-nine percent low-income housing goals, it is clear that the city needs to adopt new policies and programs. The current proposal is that a four percent inclusionary requirement remain. We think this is too low to ensure that there is adequate stock of housing to meet the needs of residents with lower income. We recommend that the inclusionary housing policy be changed to a fifty percent requirement with the seven point five percent at low and seven point five percent at very low. Uh, the Economic and Planning Systems Incorporated analysis supports a fifty percent inclusionary requirement for San Clemente's inclusionary housing program. The report states the aggregate value of the units exceeds the expected costs, including inclusionary, including In-Lu-uh Fee obligations and profit expectations, even if the project were required to provide fifty percent of units at affordable rents as required under the zoning ordinance, half of the fifty percent AMI, half of the eighty percent AMI. We also conclude, conclude that the current In-Lu-Fee of one percent of construction value is too low. The EPS analysis states that the inclusionary fee needs to be at four percent of construction value to represent the ten thousand three hundred five dollar gap subsidy- subsidy needed for affordable housing. We recommend that the inclusionary fee be be ten dollars to fifteen dollars per square foot in the range of ten fifteen thousand dollars per unit. We note that other Orange County cities have adopted housing uh policies with the average fifty percent inclusionary requirement and the average inlet fee of ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. Even with these policies, all of the cities have exceeded their above moderate arena housing goals while making progress towards their lo- lower income goals. San Clemente City should adopt fifty percent requirement with inlet fees in the range of ten to fifteen dollars per square foot because that will facilitate the development of much needed housing for residents with very low and low incomes. The current policy did not produce the needed results in the fifth window cycle. Time to update the policy to be more consistent with experience of other cities who have been able to be more suc- have more success in providing a range of affordable housing. The San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition would welcome the opportunity to meet with city staff to explore how the city could further increase affordable housing. Please let us know of any meetings regarding strategies to increase affordable homes for lower income households in the city. And to give you an idea how many more to we have six more um letters. Susan, um this comment letter is from Susan Everhart. It reads, Dear San Clemente City Council Members and Plan Commissioners, I'm writing to comment on the San Clemente's inclusionary housing program which I know you are currently considering. My concerns about the program rise out of the current difficulty of my daughter and her husband in finding a house within within reach of their income with a reasonable distance from their jobs and close to childcare provided uh by my husband and me in San Juan Capistrano. All of these criteria require that the housing, house hunting be limited to to South Orange County where by the way, they both grew up. Housing prices and rents have risen too high here or are limiting the community's diversity in all kinds of ways. I believe the community should be mindful of the needs of all of its members. I think the city's reconsideration of the inclusionary housing program provided an opportunity to address the diverse needs for appropriate health appropriate, healthy and affordable housing. The city has in its power to require home builders to include in their projects a helpful percentage of affordable homes for low and very low income people. Please raise the requirement to fifteen percent from the four percent at which it currently stands. In addition, please increase inlet of fees required of developers who absolutely cannot include fifteen percent affordable housing unit to fifteen dollars per square foot. This would build up the necessary funds for nonprofit developers to build affordable housing units to uh elsewhere in the city. Thank you to Everhart. The next comment letter is from Kimberly Adams and Michelle Murphy. And it reads, uh dear Mayor, Ward Mayor, uh Pro- Pro Tem James and San Clemente City Council Members and San Clemente uh Plan Commissioners. Orange County United Way writes to express our appreciation for your willingness to examine inclusionary housing and inlet fee policies for your city. We applaud your approach to the decision-making uh process and commitment to being a welcoming community for all. It is a fact that inclusionary housing and inlet fees will affect the funding and availability of affordable housing in our community. And we suggest collecting a higher percentage of both in order to address the issue of housing instability for so many, including children and seniors in particular. Similar cities in the area are meeting their housing demands by maintaining stable, reasonable percentages which contrary to popular belief are not deter- deterrent to developers. With regards to inlet fees, nonprofit affordable housing developers can leverage those funds to build the housing necessary to ease the burden on so many families and individuals. Housing affordability is persistently a growing challenge throughout Orange County for families, veterans, seniors and individuals as home and re- rent prices continue to climb. Due to the rising costs, households have to spend over thirty percent of their income on on housing and a growing number are spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing. Prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic, affordable housing was already a growing need in the community throughout the the county. Given this, the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on the working families uh affordable homes will be even more nee- uh more needed as we look to rebuild our local economy. Never before has there been a stronger desire to end homelessness or create housing in Orange County. In two thousand eighteen, United Way launched United and Homelessness, a powerful collaboration among Orange County's top businesses, philanthropic government, faith-based nonprofit leaders committing to ending homelessness and ensuring housing and services are available for every individual who may need them. United to End Homelessness has been a powerful voice in advocating for housing uh as a solution to end homelessness. And Orange County United Way has always supported and maintained that affordable, stable housing is the building block to a family's success. Thank you for your comprehensive approach to this matter. We are grateful to you for your courageous willingness to improve the lives of so many. Sincerely, Michelle Murphy, Director of Public Affairs. Next comment letter is from Anna Davis. And it reads, uh as a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition, I'm writing to let you know that the current proposal of a four percent inclusionary housing requirement is too low to meet the needs of those most vulnerable in our community. The commission should require at least fourteen fifteen percent for inclusionary requirement split between low and very low. Also needed is an increase in the inclusionary fee for the construction to ten to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. These changes would bring San Clemente in line with other OC cities. We are in desperate need of affordable housing. Anyone that drives through neighborhoods with families packed inside small units can see the need for change. This status quo is not sufficient. Please do better. Thanks, Anna Davis. Uh next letter is from the Kennedy Commission and it reads as follows. Dear Chair Roland and Plan Commission Members, the Kennedy Commission is a broad-based coalition of residents and community organizations that advocates for the production of affordable for homes affordable for families earning less than twenty seven thousand dollars annually in Orange County. Formed in two thousand one, the commission has been successful in partnering and working with Orange County jurisdictions to create effective housing and land use policies that has led to the new construction of homes affordable to lower income working families. The commission is writing to provide comments on the city San Clemente's uh zoning amendment PLN nineteen dash zero three two inclusionary housing program inlet fee update. The commission submitted comments on the inclusionary housing program and in the inlet fee update to the joint council in Plan Commission Study Session on December sixteen, two thousand twenty. We are attached in the comments and they are not in the attachment section of the staff uh report. Um the inclusionary housing program is a vital part of the affordable housing policies and programs of the city's housing element. City's current uh inclusionary housing program requires that projects with more than six units provide four percent affordable rental units for very low income uh household earnings fifty percent, earning fifty percent or less of the areas meeting income AMI or pay the inlet fee. The current inlet fee is based on one percent of construction value. Inlet fee is very low compared to the subsidy needed to develop an affordable unit to ensure it corresponds with the current uh affordability gap. The only code requires fifty percent affordable at housing at five percent very low and five percent low and five percent moderate. As a result of the minimal four percent inclusionary housing requirement low inlet fee calculation, the current inclusionary housing program has produced minimal affordable housing funding. It has not been effective addressing the city's housing need in a balanced way. For the two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty one housing element planning period, the city has arena of one hundred thirty four very low ninety five low income units. Per arena allocation progress reports submitted by the city, the city has built sixty nine of the forty percent, sixty percent of the one hundred thirty four very low income units and twenty eight or twenty nine percent of the ninety five low income units. However, for the above moderate income, the city outperformed and exceeded arena by constructing five hundred and nineteen or two hundred thirteen percent of the two hundred forty four above moderate income units. While thirty three above moderate units were added in two thousand nineteen, no units were added at the very low and low income levels in that same year. Kennedy Commission Recommendations, San Clemente Inclusionary Housing Update, San Clemente Inclusionary Housing Requirements and Inlet Fee for Both Rental and For Sale Developments are woefully below uh inclusionary standard used by neighboring cities in Orange County originally. As highlighted analysis by EPS, the inclusionary percentage range for most of these programs is fifty percent for low, very low and extremely low. Inclusionary housing requirement, the current proposal is that a four percent inclusionary requirement remain.
I'm sorry Gabriel, but we're out of time on this one.
Okay, yeah, there's quite a bit to go. That was from Caesar Kovarubias, Executive Director. Okay, two more letters. Uh this uh letter is from Bill uh Crutinger. And it reads, our inlet fee in affordable housing set aside percentages too low compared to other cities. We basically have unhoused and housing insecure families subsidized seeing construction right now, which is absurd. The fact that developers overwhelmingly choose to pay the fee rather than build affordable housing proves that this fee is not aligned with the policy goal. The fee should be substantially higher in order to really capture the cost of building affordable housing. The fees are intended to support. We aren't underdeveloped. There is little reason to keep this fee uh and affordable housing percentage low, which limits the city's ability to address housing need. And this is the last comment letter, which is from Mark McGuire. And it reads, Honorable Chair, Members of the Plan Commission, unfortunately though perhaps of the relief to the Plan Commission, I have not had the time to go through the new EPS draft report in detail and there's lots of new info.
This wasn't, I'm sorry, wasn't this the letter for the study session?
Yes, let me make sure. Yes, it is. It's the letter that we did read before, so. That was right. That's the end of the comments that we've received.
Okay, thank you. And I will uh close the public hearing. And I will uh open this up for planning commission discussion. Anyone want to kick us off? Commissioner Will.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I suspect that um back in nineteen eighty, um they are equivalent alternative, meaning you either build something on site or provide a funding to build offsite by either a third party or donate to land, et cetera. And so over the last forty years, they are out of sync and we see that happen a lot of times. So it is a much needed uh realignment to make them a real alternative. Uh at the same time, for the last forty years, because we, because of the misalignment, uh the city is is in a hole. Hopefully that this correction will help help the city make some progress to meet the our affordable housing policy goal of the general plan. With that said, a increase from one point six seven to seven point three six is a substantial change. It is substantial. So, so I I would say um I I would not support a fifteen percent increase at this moment from four percent. I would say let's implement it for two years. Um reevaluate it before considering any adjustment to it. It could be called up or it could could go down. Um you know, it also represents a, represents a additional cost to housing development. Uh so the most future development will be, uh we expected a multifamily condominium or apartment unit. It can be standalone or most likely be um mixed use. A eighteen hundred square feet condominium would uh would cost an extra uh about a ten thousand. And that's about a one percent of the sales price, assuming the average, the median house price is about one million. Um not a lot to change the pro forma calculation, but it is a burden and occasionally I guess that it will change the developer's decision to improve a site or not. So I'd like to um propose that we we all make a recommendation to the city council that we find some way to defray the cost, at least uh partially. Um one item I'm thinking is perhaps we can uh look into the um the guest parking ratio requirement. Right now, we're asking for one guest parking space for every three uh dwelling units. Now, maybe we can reduce it by half. Um they're not required for single family houses, so people, visitors are um biggest good to find their own parking spaces on the curb. Now, this, the the required point three 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 space per unit is a real demand. I mean, we're gonna put, put them on the street, they'll find their own, own space. Um they may they may overflow to the neighboring properties, the 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 streeting in front of neighboring properties. But that's some that's expensive. There's no free lunch. So, so what I'm thinking is, on the city order, think about some ways to defray them, the cost, so that we don't affect the overall housing development. At the same time, we want help affordable housing uh as well as overall housing development. So with that, I will support this uh this resolution. I think it's a much needed upgrade. Um with a caveat that um uh we we should consider a little bit extra to, for periodic evaluation and um some additional ways to incentivize housing development in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Brown, did you uh I saw your minute off. Did you change your mind?
I'm sorry, I thought I'd been muted for quite a while waiting for other comments, but um no, I think uh I think what EPS and the staff come up with is reasonable. Um there's a a mantra here that we've heard from many inputs of fifteen percent and ten to fifteen uh ten to fifteen thousand dollars per unit, et cetera. I think your seven point three six kind of backs your way into that. I like, for the record, I think I think the numbers work out about the same way from a different direction. I'd like to see Jennifer concur with that or EPS. I thought that was very well done. You have to keep in mind here that this is the last go-to for the cycle to update this housing element which immediately gets into the next cycle. So this thing could have the shelf life six months or it'll roll over. Just to see where we're really at in the process here. Because this is just one small element. If you look at the track changes to the zoning ordinance, which is about one page, or the track changes to the housing element, which is about a page and a half. This is one tool and I think the what staff's come up with is, and EPS is a fairly reasonable approach to this and I I can support it. So that's kind of the way I I I look at it. I think it was a very well done, all two hundred and fifteen page report from EPS. Uh but I think you're Jennifer confirmed to me that the seven dollars thirty six cents per square foot times uh the multiples, that kind of works out to where a lot of these other people are really recommending. I think you're about there, but I'd just like to move ahead with the staff on that.
Yeah, and can I, can I just ask for clarification? Um Commissioner, you were asking um whether the fee per square foot is equivalent to uh a fee that commentators were asking for a per unit. Is that correct? Okay, yes. Um and so if you go back to the EPS report, um you can see that for a um two, a two bedroom unit in a multifamily dwelling uh assuming a uh unit size of nine hundred and fifty square feet uh applying a seven uh dollar and thirty six unit, thirty six uh per square foot would get you roughly uh ten thousand dollars per that two uh bedroom apartment.
And how about for the uh the for sale unit, uh the larger unit, about the same thing?
Yeah, so for the sale, um for the prototype of a, of a twenty eight hundred single family dwelling for sale, uh that would translate out to approximately twenty thousand dollars um for that for sale, single family dwelling.
So the formula approach here that EPS and the staff are demanding kind of backs its way into what a lot of these other commentators have been asking for or looking for. But it comes, it kind of approaches it from a different direction. But the bottom line approach, we should get the result we really are looking for here. Based on way the, way the numbers work out. By the way, for EPS, a very good before, very comprehensive. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Crandall.
Yeah, I I want to congratulate both the consultant and Jennifer on the hard work they put in on this. Um I think the reality is, uh you know, any project from four to ten units, there's no way they're ever going to build an affordable uh unit in there and be able to manage it and whatnot. And as the projects get bigger and bigger, you get more sophisticated developers. Yes, um they can put, they can actually build them out themselves. Um I would love to see, if not now, at some time in the future that uh at some breakpoint, um and I think it was discussed with the consultants that uh are the actual um builders of uh the affordable products uh presented to us. builders of, uh, the affordable products, uh, presented to us, that it became practical to add and manage the units. And I'd love to see them say at a project of thirty or over, you just got to build them. I don't know what the number is, but I think that would make a lot of sense because in the small projects that we've got with mixed use, we're not going to see them built. Um, so the inlet fee is um, one of the options they've gotten. It's probably the one they're going to use, but I can support this um, the way it's presented, but, uh, I think some controls have to be done on it so people just don't avoid getting them built. So, uh, I would support it. I think it's a start and, uh, we've got to bite the bullet and start getting the units built as well as just providing the opportunity for them to be built.
Thank you. Commissioner Kozinski.
Yes, I think Jennifer and Julie did a great job bringing this presentation together. And this is a good step forward. It's a, it's a needed step forward. My only concern is that another source of revenue would probably need to be found to, uh, to fund the affordable housing budget. Because, again, um, the majority of lands, lots available are point one five acres. Uh, they're not collecting, from what I understand, any fees unless there's six, more than six units built on that, uh, six thousand five hundred and thirty-four square foot lot. So my concern is they're not going to be collecting many fees, but it is a good step forward and another source for this affordable housing budget should be considered and looked into. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, uh, I think I'm largely in agreement with my, uh, with my colleagues. I can certainly support this. I think it's a, it's a well-done, um, report. Although if I think there's any issue with it, I think we need more affordable housing. I thought you could go into great detail as to why it's great for an economy. It's, you know, you need a low-wage workforce. Any vibrant economy does. It's harder for businesses in town that don't have, you know, a large, low-wage workforce. Um, you know, it's harder on the families that are, you know, producing that. It makes it more both economically and socially more difficult for them. But, uh, you know, that aside, I think it's kind of a funny thing. We talk, this gets, something like this gets very complex. We talk a lot about numbers, collecting in lieu fees. The real goal is to build affordable units and, um, it's, that's kind of what our eyes should be on. And sometimes with these kind of complex issues like this, we, we kind of, we get into the weeds a little bit. Um, I think Bart had a great idea over, if you're building over a certain number of units, you've just got to build the affordable units. That's you know, you've got to have the units in that. If you're smaller, then you contribute money and we try to, you know, make do with that. But collecting the inlet fees is only an intermediate step to actually getting the housing, because it's the housing that's important, not, not so much the fees. Um, so I think that that's something that we want to keep in mind, uh, going forward. You know, I would even be in favor of even raising the percentage to some extent. Um, I don't know if there's a lot of, um, uh, interest in that amongst the other, other commissioners, because I think we're a long way from our arena goals. And I know sometimes, you know, the argument is, is, oh, the numbers are too high or too low or whatever. But the numbers we have are the numbers we have right now, and it's our job to try and get there for the economy of our city, to avoid, you know, potential penalties that can happen, all sorts of good reasons like that. So, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm certainly in favor of this. And in fact, you know, if we, if we could do more, especially the next round that we go through, if we maybe get more robust, have some interesting ideas like Bart's, uh, then I think that that, those are certainly ideas worth considering so that we can um, get to, get to those uh, important numbers, make those numbers, because it's going to be reflected in a more vibrant economy for us and a more liberal situation for the people who provide, who are providing those services. So I don't see, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Blackwell.
Oh, that's, that's okay. I just turned my, my light on. No, I'm in support of this project as well. Um, this report was really well-written and I, I think that the consultant, um, is proposing a method that's, it's, you know, as she had mentioned, uh, not commonly used, but I think, you know, for our purposes in our city, I think, I think it could be very effective. I I hesitate to, to push for a higher number. I think the four percent right now, based on the report, um, and all the research that went into it, works for us. The thousand units, uh, and the one calculation method with the auto updates, I think that, I think that, I think that's going to work. I feel comfortable with it. So, yeah, I, I support this one wholeheartedly.
Okay. Um, we'll see no other comments. Um, it's probably time for someone to look at making a motion. Uh, Jennifer or our IT person, we might want to put that slide up with those items that you're requesting, um, the additions to the, uh, to the motion, so that we capture all the things we need to capture. Uh, yes, Jennifer?
Thank you, Chair. And then I just wanted to follow up on, um, the questions that we had earlier. Uh, in terms of the number of units on a zero point one five acre site, um, you would potentially be able to get five units if you're in a zoning district that allows uh, thirty-six dwelling units per acre. Of course, you have to consider some other development constraints such as setbacks, floor area and height. Uh, and then also in terms of the estimate that we provided uh, last year with our lot consolidation ordinance for those, um, properties, uh, in the affordable housing overlay and eligible for lot consolidation, we estimated that we would have potentially four hundred and nineteen uh, housing units with approximately forty-eight of those as being affordable at the, um, very low or low income level uh, based on the requirements in the lot consolidation ordinance. So just things to keep in mind and then to answer earlier questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Chair Ruland, Christopher Brown. A question, uh, uh, on the resolution, does it cover the red lines that are proposed, uh, for both the housing element and the tax of seven? You know, the track changes and in the attachment eight, which is the, uh, zoning ordinance amendment, I know that's the commission recommendation, but there was red lines and track changes also for the housing element. Are those included in this resolution, PC twenty-one zero six?
Hi, this is Jennifer. Um, so in terms of the red lines for the zoning code, yes, those are included. In terms of the red lines for the inclusionary housing program that's currently in the housing element, no. Um, that is the first change that you see on the slide before you, which is to add a section um, to the planning commission, uh, resolution. And if you refer to page twenty-one of your packet, which is one of the pages of the recommended city council ordinance, there is a section four on page twenty-one. And, uh, it reads, uh, has some language about adopting the housing element. I'm sorry, the inclusionary housing update. And I am going to go there. Going to go there with you.
Yeah, we just need to read that section. It's only a sentence or so. We just need to read that section into our uh, resolution, correct?
Correct. And let, just let me know if you'd like staff to do that.
Okay.
I think we should need some help doing it, yeah. If you'd like, Chair Ruland, I'll make a resolution and let staff fill in some of the blanks to this page. If that would be amendable to everybody on the commission.
Sounds good.
I recommend that the planning commission approve resolution number PC twenty-one dash zero zero six. Resolution, the planning commission of the city of San Clemente, California, recommending amendments to the city's zoning ordinance, section seventeen point four one twenty, including their housing and the city's development processing fee schedule. In addition to the comments contained in the charts and now being read into the record by staff.
And that is adding that the inclusionary housing program is updated as recommended in the inclusionary housing program update report prepared by Economic and Planning Systems.
Go through the pages and the track changes.
I, I, I think it does. It wasn't, I think there were two other things too. There was one word we had to change from three to four, for instance.
Correct. Um, and so I, if IT wouldn't mind putting that slide back up for me, but the second, uh, change was thank you, Tara. Um, the second change was on page twenty-one. That's in the recommended council ordinance, uh, and changing the text from three to four.
And that, that's an item C two. The first word of C two should be, should be four and not three.
Correct. And then, pardon me, asking you to go backwards, um, but in page, um, eleven of your proposed reso, resolution, um, we would change seven sixty-three to seven thirty-six.
And page thirteen and fourteen?
Correct. And the same on page thirteen.
So we modify the inclusionary housing program, that's the track changes and amending the zoning ordinance and modifying the methodologies along with these changes. And that's the proposal I just read and
And that's a, that's a motion by Brown and Commissioner Wu, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay, second by Wu. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And Ruland votes aye. Measure passes unanimously. So good work, Jennifer and everyone else. Thank you very much for your hard work. I know we've had a number of sessions going on with this material. So next on our agenda, uh, item nine is new business. We have none. Item ten is old business and we have none. And item eleven is reports of commissioners and staff. So let me ask staff first. Do you have any, any reports for us today? No reports from staff? Any commissioners have any reports? If not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I propose we adjourn to the next adjourned regular meeting of the planning commission to be held on April seventh, twenty-one, April seven, twenty twenty-one at six P M via teleconference.
All right, thank you. Oh, sorry, a motion by Brown. Second, uh, second by Kozinski. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Hi.
Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
And Ruland votes aye. Passes unanimously. So we are adjourned until April seventh. Everybody have a great month.